Good morning and welcome to the August 13th, 2019 Board of Supervisors meeting. As customary, we're going to rise for a moment of silence and Supervisor Crandall has a dedication for us today.
So I have a dedication for Matthew Burkett. He was in, he was, he passed away in the fire last year during the ranch fire and they're doing a dedication. The Lake Pillsbury Fire Department is doing a dedication for him on Elk Mountain Road and it's for Matthew Burkett and here's a picture of him.
Michael, can you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, four, consideration of extra items not appearing on the post agenda. Is there any extra items? No? Okay. Four, approval of consent agenda. Consent agenda is items that are seen as non-controversial that can be moved by one motion unless somebody from the board wishes to remove an item for further clarification. Anybody from the board wishes to remove an item?
No.
See, none. Anybody from the public have any comments or questions on a consent agenda? See, no movement. I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve consent agenda item 5.1 through 5.14.
Motion is second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we are early for our public input, 9:05, so we'll go to calendars. Supervisor Sabatier.
So tomorrow I will be going over to a meeting over at CC4C, that's Citizens Caring for Clear Lake. They help us do a lot of our cleanups.
Thank you very much. Tomorrow at 10:30, I will be joining the group Citizens Caring for Clear Lake, who do a lot of cleanups in our city, a volunteer group, our nonprofit group that does great work. I'll be sitting in their meeting, seeing how it is that I can help them with their efforts. On Thursday, I will be meeting with a gentleman who wants to talk to me about an appeal coming up to our board sometime in the near future, something to do with an appeal on cannabis grow, I think, in District 1. And on Friday, I'm meeting with Caltrans to talk about their project in Lake County, mainly to do with broadband access. There's a law that says when Caltrans does work that they're supposed to add broadband fiber optic cables. For some reason, they're not doing it in ours and I believe it's because the project is older than the date that they were supposed to start doing that, but it doesn't make sense as we move forward to not have those things added in because fiber optics is really important. So we'll be having those conversations. And then back here on Monday to get prepared for our Tuesday meeting and meeting with our CAO. And I believe on the 17th also I'll be joining Supervisor Brown in cutting down some weeds and hopefully I won't do what I did to my leg this weekend as I was doing my own weed eating as well. That's it for now.
Supervisor Simon.
Yes, just like to report on Sunday, I attended the groundbreaking of the Methodist Church in Lower Lake, so that is coming back up. That is the second church in my district that is being rebuilt after both one in the valley fire we lost in Hidden Valley and now the one in Lower Lake that we lost during the Clayton fire. So that was a good event on Sunday that I attended. After the meeting today, I have a vehicle, we had an ad hoc committee today, Carol, have it on the calendar for the...
Yeah, our time approximate for the vehicle committee is 12:30, but it just depends on how fast today goes.
Okay, and then later on this...
After agenda review.
And then later on this evening, I think I'll be attending with Tina, the Lakeport Annex Meeting that's happening at City Council. Tomorrow, I have the Lower Lake Action Committee Group down in Lower Lake. Thursday, have the Group Insurance Committee Meeting. And then Friday, the ad hoc committee for the Cannabis and Hemp Operations Resolution with the Fire Department that we're working on. Also Friday evening will be the Lake County scrimmage, football season's back here in Lake County, which is excellent. And then on Monday, I have the Risk Reduction Authority at 3:00 PM, also meeting with Carol here on Tuesday, so.
Supervisor Crandall.
Okay, so today, after the Board of Supervisors meeting, I'll just be catching up on some work, either phone calls or, you know, constituent based type of things. Tomorrow, I will be going to RCRC in Sacramento and I tentatively, hopefully, have this meeting with the Cal, with the, her name is Laurel Featherstone from the Regional Water Board for the state. And that's for the Listerne Water Situation. Meeting Thursday with the CAO, Blue Ribbon Committee Meeting in the afternoon and then Listerne Town Hall. Actually, I forgot about Wednesday, the Worth Meeting as well in the evening. So when I get back, I'm coming straight to the Worth Meeting. Friday, I have some constituent meetings. Saturday, I'm doing the Lakeport Car and Boat Side Show and try to cut over to the Thousand Hands as well, get some, get some abatement done on some of those weeds.
Watch your leg.
And I'm gonna wash my leg, Bruno. Monday, I'll be back, have a meeting with the Lake Pillsbury Alliance Group in the morning and then a CAO meeting and then back here on Tuesday for the Board of Supervisors Meeting.
Okay, my calendar agenda review after the meeting today, then I have a meeting with Carol after agenda review at noon, depending on what time we get out of here. I will also be attending the City of Lakeport Annexation Meeting at 6:00 PM, it's a public hearing. Tomorrow morning, I have meetings, I'm still looking for a Planning Commissioner, so if somebody's interested and you live in District 4, I'm still doing interviews for a new Planning Commissioner because I lost mine because he went back to school to work full time. And then on the 14th also, I have a First Five Commission Meeting at 2:00. And then we'll also be attending that evening, Lakeport Unified School District School Board Meeting. On Thursday, I'll be conducting more interviews. And then Friday, I'm gonna be out of the office. I am taking my daughter down to San Jose for college and then hopefully back in time to hit the car show, but I won't be back in time for the Hundred Hands. And then back here on Monday, meeting with constituents and then on Tuesday. And that's our calendars. All right.
Madam Chair, I missed one too. I apologize. I just wanted to inform the board and the committee, I was asked to, well, I was sent an email from the Governor's Office for the appointment for potential for the State Board of Fire Services. There is a position open for either a CAO or county supervisor. I've talked to our CAO and at this point, I'm definitely interested in it, part of the Chairman of the Risk Reduction Authority. And I'm gonna put my hat in the ring and go through the interview and see if the pool, if I can be appointed to this board. So I just wanted to make an announcement that do that, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anything further? Okay. Our 6.1 item, 9:05 AM item, public input. Is there any public input? No public input this morning. So we can go to our 6.2 item, our 9:06 AM item, consideration of continuation of a local health emergency in order prohibiting and the endangerment of the community through the unsafe removal, transportation and disposal of fire debris for the Mendocino Complex Fire. Dr. Gustafson, welcome.
Good morning, Board.
Good morning.
Public Health is requesting your Board's continuation of a proclamation of a local health emergency due to the Mendocino Complex Fire. The debris cleanup has not quite been completed and there may be exposure to hazardous substances that can lead to acute and chronic health risks. So the proclamation is continuing to be necessary in order to protect the health and safety of the public.
Welcome. Is there any questions for Dr. Gustafson? Any questions or comments from the public on this item? See, no movement. I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Madam Chair, I move to continue or approve the continuation of a local health emergency in order prohibiting the endangerment of the community through the unsafe removal, transportation and disposal of fire debris for the Mendocino Complex Fire.
Second.
And motion is second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, we can't go to our next timed item, so how about 7.2, consideration of the following appointments, Lower Lake Waterbed, Water Works District, 1 Board of Directors. We have one vacancy with two applicants and this is District 1. Supervisor Simon.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to...
No motion yet. If there's anything I'd say...
Oh, I apologize.
You have no comments? Okay.
No comments.
Is there any comments or questions from the audience, public? Okay, see none. Now you can make a motion.
Sorry, I was moving too fast, sir. Yeah, Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Katie Evans to the Lower Lake County Water District.
Second.
And motion is second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. We are still early. I guess we're going to have to take our 7.3 item up?
Happy to do that, Madam Chair.
Okay, consideration of recruitment strategy for hiring the new public health officer.
Thank you. So the Health Services Director Denise Pomeroy and I and our HR Director Pamela Nichols have all conferred about recruitment strategy and at this point in time, our recommendation to your Board is that we carry out what is essentially a standard recruitment to fill the position with a special color flyer. You may recall that the last time we recruited, the department used a recruiting executive search firm and had quite a good turnout of applicants. There was a good candidate pool for consideration and so we're hoping that we can recreate that and have a good showing of candidates from, from an ordinary recruitment through HR.
Denise.
Good morning, your Board. Just what Carol said, basically, we'd like to put it out for recruitment. We have all the materials that we used two years ago and so we're just gonna use those same materials, which has, you know, informational flyers, it'll go out on all of the professional agencies across the state and we have a very nice flyer and some other items that should hopefully bring in some candidates.
Okay. Is there any questions or comments? Supervisor Sabatier.
I was just curious in that last recruitment, who was involved on the panel?
I was on the panel, as was Ms. Pomeroy and I'm trying to remember who else was.
So we did a two-tiered panel for this. We have a team of physicians who do the medical review piece and then the county, Carol, myself, there was a board member, I don't remember whom, maybe not. So it's a two-tier panel and then it comes before your Board.
And those physicians, were they directly involved with our local hospitals?
They are directly involved. We had Dr. Karen Tate, who was our prior health officer, Dr. Marshall Kubota, who is the Medical Director of Partnership Health Plan, who serves 51% of our community. And then we had a health officer, I can't remember her last name, Karen from Napa, who came over. And so those were the physicians that we, that we had, that are really involved in public health matters.
And so that would be the panel that ranks the candidates for you, what the type of structure that Denise is describing and then your Board would, would hold the actual hiring interviews.
Right. Thank you.
Is there any further questions? Supervisor Simon.
Good question. Would human resources be involved with the entire process also on all the panel?
Absolutely. Yeah, absolutely.
And one other question follow-up on the resignation, do we need to accept the resignation as a Board or just the resignation is done as, I know that we did that, you know, we...
And I accepted it from the department head level. I gave her, just from the administration piece, it will come back before your Board to appoint an interim health officer within the next two weeks.
So let's make that a dual agenda item that includes having the Board accept her resignation. That will be before she leaves. She's here through the end of the month and we anticipate no later than the last Tuesday of the month, having your Board consider a contract for gap coverage.
Okay. Just one clarification. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Any questions or comments from the public on this item? See, no movement. This is just giving direction to staff, so there's no action, so I don't know if you, I think we're, we're fine with what your plan is, correct? Do we have...
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Okay?
Thank you very much.
We are going to stop for like 30 seconds, move really slow here. Oh, 9:15, here we go. Our 6.3 item, 9:15 AM, consideration of creating a standing committee to support and facilitate a Middle Creek Restoration Project. Supervisor Sabatier, I'm just taking, or is it PJ?
Both of us. So within the past couple of months, Peter Windrum actually came before the Board and gave a presentation on the Middle Creek Restoration Project and he expressed the intricacies of, and work that it takes to get the ball moving on this and it's been going for at least 20 years. So Supervisor Sabatier had called me one night and says, I felt like he was talking to us and I agreed. I was like, I think he is, because we, you know, it's in my district and Supervisor Sabatier felt he would help and he has played a really big role in helping me out with this. We've been meeting with them, with Peter Windrum and Harry Lyons and then Scott DeLeone has been present as well. When David was here, that he would, David Cowan, before he left, he met with us as well to get some things in order. And so we've just decided to put this on the agenda and put together an actual committee so that that way, it's a standing committee and things can actually get done and hopefully we could see this project through. And I'll let Supervisor Sabatier.
Yeah, so I won't repeat what Supervisor Crandall said. It was exactly right. We were kind of inspired by Peter Windrum's presentation, but also we all know and we all agree on this Board that it's an important project, but none of us are directly involved in the project and we know that there's staffing issues and there was a request that with extra staff, a lot of this could get done. I called Supervisor Crandall because District 2 is definitely impacted by the water quality as the current brings everything southwards towards Cache Creek. And so we contacted the Coalition and asked them how they felt about the meeting with us and using us and kind of delegating work to us. It's kind of a sad statement, but it's a fact that when you have the word supervisor in front of your name and you call a state or federal office, they're more likely to listen than if you don't have that in front of your name. And so we can help with some of the political nudging that needs to happen with our federal representatives and so on and so forth. And we've already had contact with John Garmendy's office, had some communication, submitted a letter of support to get appropriations from the Army Corps of Engineers so that we can get that on their work program budget. We also learned that that might not be the correct way to do it, so then we had a longer conversation to learn the process on getting those things done, but we're getting ourselves involved. And we think that this project is not just important to District 2 and District 3, it's important to the entire community, the entire county. And so to have a standing committee until this project is completed, to ensure that current and future leaders sitting on this Board are going to take part in helping advance this project, is really important to make sure that this project is not another 20, 30 years down the road. I think our water quality is both an economical issue as well as a social issue and also a health issue. And so all of the above is too important to just put it on the shoulders of staff and wait for them to get it all done, especially as we're dealing with some staffing crisis in different departments. There was a little bit of confusion in the, and I apologize, that would be my fault, in the memo that was written. The volunteer committee right now is called the Middle Creek Project Coalition or the Middle Creek Coalition. We would not be creating the same name, we would be creating something along the lines of the Middle Creek Restoration Project Committee. Their coalition can still meet on how to work and how to help on the side, but the committee should be a smaller group of less than seven people so that we can get the conversation going and make decisions as to what the next steps are and delegate action items to the right people. In the suggestion of the memo, of course, we want Director Scott DeLeone to be involved. I know right now he is interim, but whoever is a part of the water resources should be involved, heavily involved in this committee. Have two people from the Coalition at this moment, we're speaking with Mr. Windrum and Mr. Lyons, and then two supervisors and that would make for a party of five, which I think would be adequate to move things forward. I would like to recommend that Supervisor Crandall and myself continue on this project as we've already started and had a couple of meetings, as I'd be excited to help keep pushing this forward.
Okay. Any questions or comments before I open up to the public? Is there any public comment on this item? If you could state your name in any of three minutes.
My name is Val Nixon. Is this working?
And if I may ask, in case she has more than three minutes, she is part of the Coalition and since we are discussing the Coalition, if she might be able to get three, more than three minutes, just in case she needs it.
We've cut to our timer, right?
It'll be fine. So my name is Val Nixon and I'm a member of the Middle Creek Restoration Coalition and President of the Lake County Land Trust. The Middle Creek Restoration Coalition fully supports the formation of a standing committee by the Board of Supervisors as it functions as the watershed protection district and the non-federal sponsor of the Middle Creek Project. Such a standing committee would forge the efforts of the private citizen activists and the public servants working for the completion of the project. California Water Boards see this project as a key element in slowing the eutrophication of Clear Lake. It tops the list of their recommendations in support of the total maximum daily load of nutrients. The Department of Water Resources through its flood protection corridor program and other state programs has provided close to $28 million for land purchases. The U.S. Environmental Protection Agency, working through the County, Lake County Resource Conservation District, has executed restoration projects in the Scots Creek, Middle Creek watershed and the Natural Resource Conservation Service has developed conservation easements allowing the restoration of Tulley Lake. All these government organizations prepare for action by the County of Lake, the non-federal sponsor, and the United States Army Corps of Engineers, who is the lead agency. Three years ago, the Middle Creek Restoration Coalition formed to gather public support for the Middle Creek Project and to lobby in removing roadblocks among the agencies responsible for accomplishing the restoration. The Army Corps and the County of Lake have shown enthusiasm and patience for our efforts in increasing the awareness and activity of our state and federal representatives. Private citizens and county officials can undertake unique and distinct actions. The formation of a standing committee would allow regular communication and coordination of these actions. The form, excuse me, we support it and only ask or actually are thankful to avoid commu- confusion with our 100-member coalition that the county choose a different name than Middle Creek Restoration Coalition. We'd like to claim our name. We are 100% behind this, the organization of this committee. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further public comment?
Terry Logston, Environmental Director for the Scots Valley Band of Pomo Indians. First, I would like to commend the Board of Supervisors Sabatier and Crandall for bringing this focus and attention that's needed to the Middle Creek Restoration Project. However, my concern is that the Lake County Watershed Protection District has four zones of benefit for flooding. And as it's written in the 2014 Municipal Service Review by LAFCO, there's supposed to be two appointed citizen, what do they call them, Citizens Advisory Task Force Committees that meet twice a year to review and advise staff on flood control facility maintenance and activities needed within their specific zone as well as oversee the budget and make recommendations to staff. Now, I haven't asked Interim Director DeLeone about it, but the former staff and current staff, I have asked. Those four committee members have never been appointed and they could serve as the committee also for the Middle Creek Restoration Project or whatever you call your coalition, specifically since two of them are supposed to be overseeing that benefit, that zone of benefit in the Middle, in Middle Creek watershed. Additionally, I also represent the Scots Valley Tribe on the Blue Ribbon Commission and they have a technical subcommittee which is gonna be making recommendations, which would include, I would assume committees such as this that you're proposing. And so there, we're meeting on Thursday for draft recommendations and while I can't speak for any other member of that commission, I would urge you to wait until they release their report or put in place what is already required but lacking in the Water Resources Division. Thank you.
Any further public comment? Supervisor Sabatier?
And I just wanted to add that I did have a conversation with Director Scott DeLeone. I'm not just trying to throw him into something else. I wanted to make sure that we weren't adding more to his plate as he's already added, stepped up to the plate and taken on Water Resources as well as Public Works. And so he has said that this will not, it's, those meetings were already happening with the Coalition and so this will not be adding a huge load on his plate in addition to.
Anything further from the Board?
So with the Blue Ribbon Committee, I am thinking that, we do meet Thursday. I know that there's, I know that there's correlation between the two of these, this project especially. I think, I think the real, well, not the real, but the most important thing is that the group that we're trying to create here is mainly just getting the cogs, wheeling the cogs to get the Army Corps to move faster. So that's, that's, that's really where that sits at, is a lot of what the work is on that end. But I mean, if Bruno's okay with it, I don't mind postponing to wait for the, for the results of that meeting.
And in my opinion, I think that one of the wonderful things is that you're on both of those committees. If we create the committee and prove to you, for you to be on there, so you would be that liaison between the two. But you're right, that we're mainly trying to get federal and state to move as far as the actions that we choose to take, that has to be in collaboration with every other entity that we're working with, which includes the Blue Ribbon Committee. So I don't think that we would be stepping on toes or doing too much of a separation. I think having you on there and being that liaison is a perfect combination.
Okay. If that's acceptable as well.
Especially since it takes decades to get Caltrans to move, it might take decades to get PG&E to move and so starting those conversations now as we've just begun and then making sure that everything aligns with everything else. And I appreciate you bringing up also the MSR. I'll be looking into that as well.
Great, thank you. I, just because I don't want to, I understand and absolutely needed to keep, I don't know what's the saying, you know, keep your foot to the flame with the Army Corps of Engineer and get things moving. I commend you for having that as a focus because it's key for the water quality issues. My concern is that the flood benefit zones don't have oversight and they should. And so if there's a way, because the Middle Creek flood zone, benefit zone, includes the restoration project, at least two of those members perhaps could be those and then appoint the other, which is Scots Creek, Middle Creek, Adobe Creek and Kelsey Creek. Those four zones are supposed to have citizen oversight.
So that could probably be something that we agendize and then speak about because it's not on this agenda, so...
Right. But my suggestion is maybe looking at them to be a part, also a part of that. Thank you very much.
Great. Is there anything further?
Is that something we can add later at all? Okay. So we can, we can move forward with this and then add that later if that's...
Okay, so then I'm looking for a motion.
So Madam Chair, I'll motion to approve the creation of the Middle Creek Restoration Coalition.
Let's use the, a different name, the Middle Creek Restoration Project Committee.
Is that further in that for way?
That way we don't copy and paste what's already in existence.
Is that, does that work, Val, or...
It might get confusing.
So moved.
And then you're appointing the two members, you and Supervisor Sabatier?
Two Supervisors, Water Resource Director, two members of the Middle Creek, the actual Middle Creek Restoration Coalition.
Yes, of their choice. Second.
I have a motion is second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, we have one minute before we can take up the next item. So we'll just sit idle since it's not enough time. But we're gonna be taking up our 6.4 item next.
Do you mind if I ask a question?
Sure.
Supervisor Brown, how's your Thousand Hands going and your fire extinguisher giveaway?
Did you, did we do calendar?
We did.
I apologize. When the judge says you have to be there, you have to be there. It doesn't matter who you are, so...
Do you want to report out on that since...
Yeah, so that's pretty much my calendar, that's what I'll be doing the rest of the week. I was preparing for the Thousand Hands Project. You know, it was vital prior to the fires that we experienced in the Black Forest, but it's just, it's extremely vital to come together and do what we can to make sure that corridor is protected as much as possible. And we have a lot of volunteers, a lot of interest in this. One thing that I would like to throw out there is that a lot of folks in, in some of the Riviera Heights, Buckingham and Riviera West especially, are elderly that are not able to come and help. And so we need help from all around the county in order to help them and I'm throwing that out there, the folks that, that can, can make it. It's, it's, we've had huge success by BLM and CAL FIRE in, in the Black Forest area, even in spite of the fire. We were very lucky that crews were there, they were able to get on it as quickly as possible, but I was up in there yesterday and they've done a real good job of getting that done. Better late than never and I'm grateful for what they've done. So that eliminated about maybe a little over a mile of what we had anticipated that we had anticipated. So, that eliminated about, maybe a little over a mile of what we had anticipated that we were going to have to do as volunteers, so that's, that really helps us a lot.
We're down to 20 feet?
We're down to about, about 2,000, 20,000 feet total that we have to do. So, break that down, and whatever numbers show up, I think we can, we can get this thing done pretty quick. So, and then the fire extinguisher giveaway will be the next day at the Riviera Elementary School, and we have 520 fire extinguishers to give away to anybody in the county. Anybody that's a resident in Lake County can, can get one of those, so. And it's not one per household. If you have two people driving cars, where you get, you can get two of them, just, it's first come, first served. We, we want them to be in the hands of people who have exposure to, you know, spending time on the roads and could possibly come across a fire early enough to where they can put it out before it becomes a disaster, another disaster. So, so that's what this week is all about for me, so.
And, and same as last time, if you show up on Saturday, you get a priority.
On Saturday, if you're also one of the people that want a fire extinguisher, you'll get a voucher, so you'll be first in line for, for that, so.
Thank you.
And our, thanks to the Wine Alliance for that donation for those fire extinguishers, $28,000. They donated for that, so it was very, very kind of them, and they, they feel the same way I do. It's better to be a part of a project that protects us from a fire than to be part of a project that helps people after the disaster has occurred. So, there's, there's a lot more, more value to that right now for us.
Okay. With that, we can go to our 6.4 item, our 9:30 a.m., continued from August 6, 2019, sitting as the Lake County Watershed Protection District Board of Directors, adopt a resolution to form the Big Valley Groundwater Sustainability Agency. Scott De Leone.
Good morning. Scott De Leone, interim Water Resources Director. I'm going to start by thanking everyone here in the audience. I recognize a lot of faces, and I appreciate the interest in this. This is actually something that is a long time coming. I've provided your board with an executive summary. There's quite a bit of information. I'm not going to go over the history of, of groundwater sustainability agencies, SIGMA, all of that. But it's important that our county take control of, of groundwater basins and, and their management. The, the state is willing and welcome to step in and, and manage things if local agencies don't, and I don't think that that's in our best interest, with all due respect. And so, what today's objective is, we prepared a draft resolution that, if approved, would signal to the state that you are electing to form a groundwater sustainability agency. And if you don't mind, I'm going to use the acronym GSA from here on out. And what our proposal is, is that your board, sitting as the Board of Directors of the Watershed Protection District, act as that official GSA. Now, the water code requires that a GSA consider the interests of all beneficial use, uses and users in that groundwater basin. And what I propose is that a groundwater, a GSA advisory group be part of this, be created that would include representation from the county, tribal government from that basin, the municipal water supplier, which would be special districts, the CHI Council, because the environmental concerns or interests are, are included in, or should be included, domestic well users, and the agricultural community, all vital stakeholders of groundwater in, in that basin. It gives the opportunity for their input, but it, it is an advisory board or an advisory committee to your board. Today's meeting, what I'm hoping to accomplish is to get your concurrence with that format, with the resolution, obviously the opportunity to take public input. And then, what I'm looking for is your concurrence with the resolution, or, or propose any changes to it. And, and then, subject to public notice, we'll be back to your board with the official adoption of the resolution on the 27th. So, this is a, a good kickoff to ask questions, take public input. I, again, I recognize several faces of, of the folks that are the stakeholders in this basin, and so, looking forward to their input. And if you have any questions, I'll be happy to try to answer them.
Okay, any questions? Supervisor Brown?
So, I know you just stated it, and I was trying to read it at the same time, and you were, you were elaborating a little bit more on, on what's in the text here, but the makeup of this, because we'll have a, we'll actually have like two members from this group, and, you know, one member, that kind of thing, like we do normally. What do you envision with that? How many members? And have you, have you put that into any thought at all, or?
Well, the, the short answer is no, I haven't given you, I haven't put much thought into the actual makeup of that, of that advisory committee. It needs to be a board-appointed committee, and, and so you're going to need some, some board, a couple of board members on that committee. And then, it, it needs to have representation from all the different groups that I've mentioned. And, and I think that perhaps, listening to the interest at today's input, I, I think will help define or help decide how many seats need to be on that, on that committee.
So, and the reason I ask for this, because it's a, it's a double-edged sword, these committees always are, especially when they're board-appointed, because you have to have a quorum and all that. You want, when you, when you say stakeholders, that's, that's really broad. Everybody's a stakeholder in groundwater. And, so you want a lot of input, but the, the larger the committee, the chances are greater that there won't be a quorum. And so you don't want to have a committee where you don't get anything done, or, you know, there's, there's just nothing, nothing accomplished. I've been on both, and I can tell you, the ones that, the smaller the numbers that are voting, anybody can come. Anybody can allow input, and that input can be considered for any advice given to the board. But, but the more people that you have on there that are actually voting members, it's really, really difficult to, to get things done. I'm not suggesting that we not have all the stakeholders, but we have to really consider that. When you talk about the county, what, what were you thinking on that, as far as the county? You talked about board members, but it doesn't necessarily have to be two board members. It can be a board member and an alternate, correct, Anita? Does it have to be two board members on, on that committee, or just one and an alternate? Because we.
It's up to, it's up to the board.
Okay, we can, we can do that. And I would suggest that we, we do that, because, you know, board members are busy, and so having an alternate is.
As long as, I'm sorry Supervisor Brown, if I could just clarify, as long as the alternate doesn't participate in the meetings, because you can't have three there.
Correct, yeah, yeah. So, and then, but the county, is that you're also talking about special districts, or?
Special districts? So, I just listed these. If you had a, an, if you had a board representative, a representative from the tribe, a representative for ag interests, a representative of special districts, a member of the public, and a member of the CHI Council, and I would suggest, because that's an even number, I would suggest either a seat with community development, who oversees land use and land use development in the basin, or water resources. That would give you seven, and you'd have an odd number for voting purposes, things of that nature. And it's, again, it's, that's a number of folks, that's seven, but it, it's.
Yeah, that's a doable number. The one thing that I, you know, in looking at the, we're, describe the Big Valley Basin, just so we know exactly what it is that we're talking about. Where, where would that be, as far as a boundary?
It's from the lake to.
Is Highland Springs that far north? Is it in that?
Yes.
Because that.
That far south.
That far south, because that feeds the.
Extends to State Park, and just, just rims the, the foothills there, the base of Mount Conocti and, and around.
So, so in laying this out there, you know, and looking at first glance, you have, Big Valley Tribe is obviously in there. Kelseyville is in there because of the municipal water, and then there's a lot of residential wells. And then, I mean, it's largely ag, you know, most of it's, most of it's ag. 90% of it probably is ag land. So, what else, what other, I know you had the CHI Council in there because of their interest as well.
Yes.
In that, but what else?
A member of the public.
Okay.
For domestic well.
Okay.
And then, someone from either Water Resources or Community Development.
Okay.
And I think Community Development would be the appropriate choice, because, again, they're, they're reviewing land use applications, and I think that would be the appropriate seat.
Yeah. And, and special districts would be, would represent water purveyors.
Municipal water, yes.
Municipal water. Okay. And I'm just going to throw this out there, because this is the way I feel about it, the other largest user of it, and the, you know, for jobs and everything else that goes along with it, is, is ag, the ag producers. And I, I think they should, there should be a couple seats, based on the proportion to share of the use of the water in the interest, so.
Okay. Well, this, again, this would be a board-appointed committee.
Right.
And, and I think that you have the, your purview to make that decision, and, and I, I would agree.
Any thing further from the board before I open it to public? Supervisor Sabatier?
I was just, for the purposes of time, how many times would you plan on having these types of meetings? Quarterly, monthly, biannually?
Well, again, I, I believe this is a board-appointed committee, and I, I, I think that, I think that that's going to be something that you decide with respect to the bylaws or the.
But when would, when would information come that can be conveyed to the board, to this committee, where, okay, here's an update? Because if we do it monthly and you don't have an update, then what's the purpose of doing it monthly? And it's just to see, how much time are we asking CDD? How much time are we asking special districts, and so on and so forth?
So, the, I think the, you know, the, the first step in this is the creation of the, this GSA, the agency. And then, there needs to be a plan that gets developed, and I think the, the initial work that's going to be done by this agency is going to be the development of that plan. And the state offers a number of resources, not, in addition to funding, they offer facilitation services and, and a number of other resources that could be utilized in the development of that plan. I, I think that perhaps quarterly initially would be a good place to start, while that plan is being developed, and while we're putting the pieces in place with, with funding and, and all those kinds of things. I should note that there is a fair amount of funding available through the state. However, you have to have a GSA in place in order to be eligible for that funding. So, right now, we are, we're kind of missing the boat with respect to funding availability and, and being able to, to go after some of that without that GSA in place. So, this, again, is the first step in ultimately managing the water and the groundwater, but it's, it's a necessary step in order to be eligible for the funding, which then just opens up a lot of opportunity. The plan will be a substantial plan. It'll likely be completed by a consultant, and, and so the funding for that would be something that we would apply for.
Right. And at this moment in time, I know CDD does collective water use when they're looking at projects and development. So they're obviously doing their job of paying attention, but at this moment, the GSA would allow us to have a long-term, 20-year plan to ensure the longevity of the basin and, and things like that.
Absolutely.
And I really like that idea. I think that helps us to control where we're heading, rather than saying oops 10 years from now and not knowing that this is what we've created for ourselves, so.
Supervisor Brown?
So, in, in answer to, to your question, what I would recommend is that they do quarterly like Scott did, and you could always, if they meet on a certain day, they can always say, you know, let's meet again next month to follow up with this. You can meet more often, depending upon the wishes of the committee at the time. And I think initially, they, they may want to do that, just to see where everybody is, establish guidelines, bylaws, you know, things like that, and what the ultimate vision is. Because regardless of your interest, if it's municipal, or ag, or tribal, anything, we want to keep this thing under our control. There, if you, if anybody thinks for a minute that there's not a, a group of people down there in Sacramento that want to slap a meter on every well up here and be in control over our water, and they're not even from here, they're sadly mistaken. That is, that's been an effort that's been going on for many, many years, and that, with, with the folks that are down there right now, their, their time has never been better. And we have to collaboratively work to make sure that we do what we can to protect our water and our rights and our ability to monitor ourselves, as opposed to having somebody from Southern California or the Bay Area come and tell us what we can and can't do with our water, so.
And I, I was hoping that Mr. De Leone would say quarterly, because I think that's the right decision, but I agree also, you can add meetings in between as needed.
Supervisor Crandall?
Just a quick question, Scott. So, the Big Valley Tribe, of course, is in, in the basin, and what about the Scots Valley Tribe, are they included, or?
They are not. They are outside of the basin.
They do have land in the Kelseyville area, though. I know.
Well, again, they can, anybody can, you know, come and offer input to the committee, to the, to the meetings as well, so, yeah.
Okay. I was just asking.
Okay. Anything further before I open them to the public? Okay, public comment on this item? If you could state your name, and then you have three minutes.
Good morning, Board. Brenna Sullivan, Lake County Foreign Bureau. There are a couple of things I want to go over real quick. First, the Board of Supervisors does have an existing groundwater committee for Big Valley. It's called the Big Valley Groundwater Management Zone Commission, and they were active, I think more back in 2008 through 2010, that area. Maybe Scott or Tom Smythe would know more about that. But the makeup of that committee are, there are four agricultural seats, there's a public supply seat, and there are two at-large seats. For the purposes of this, you know, you might want to look at the makeup of that, but the two at-large seats could certainly accommodate the tribal representation, environmental representation. In the interest of time and moving forward with the GSA, that might be a, an option worth looking into. Instead of forming a separate entity, the Big Valley Groundwater Management Zone Commission was appointed to review groundwater data, set management policy and procedures, and there's some, there's an additional information on that that I can provide. Real quick, I just wanted to frame the situation. Back in 2016, when these basins were prioritized, Big Valley was down at the bottom of the 135 or so groundwater basins that DWR chose to regulate under SIGMA. And the factors that the state DWR uses in determining the groundwater medium, high, medium, or low priority are mostly based on, they have to use consistent metrics statewide, so they're not really looking at specific local data. So they're looking at studies that, that are dated back to a time where they could apply it statewide. So, for example, our population, our groundwater reliance data, that sort of things that go into how Big Valley was prioritized are either outdated, or the data is not accurate. So for the ag-specific metrics, when we went in and looked at Upper Lake and Scots Valley last year, when they opened that, those basins up for comment, there were a number of data sets such as irrigation dates, start and end times, amount of irrigation used in specific crops. All of that had to be readjusted. And just by sending them agricultural-specific data updates, it was, it was enough to bump Scots Valley and Upper Lake out of SIGMA. So, Big Valley, in looking at the data that they used, it's the same. They don't take into account the fact that probably half of the Walnut acreage is not irrigated. They don't look at the fact that our grain haze are not irrigated. They don't look, they, they'll take statewide, for example, irrigation amounts for vineyard, we use less up here in Lake County. They don't look at the trend over time in less pairs and irrigation efficiencies. So the local data is not really taken into account. I don't say this to say that we're going to get out of SIGMA. I just want to frame this and to, to help you see that Big Valley really isn't an impacted groundwater basin. So this will help moving forward and looking at how we set up the advisory committee, how we move forward in regulating the basin, because we can, there are lots of different ways through SIGMA legislation, that it could be more draconian, or it can be working with the groundwater users. And in a lot of these, in these grant fundings, there are matching, there's a. And in a lot of these, in these grant fundings, there are matching, there's a matching funds, you know, 25% matching funds requirement, for example. So, trying to raise a quarter million dollars across the production wells and the less than 10 public supply wells in Big Valley is going to be a huge impact on especially ag users. So, um, thank you for your time. I have a lot of additional comments, but I don't wanna overstep my three minutes here.
Thank you, Brenna.
Thank you.
Hi, Terry Logston, Scots Valley Ban of Pomo Indians, Environmental Director. First off, thank you for your, uh, suggestion that the Scots Valley Ban be represented. We were happy to participate as a community participation because the groundwater there is important to us. And thanks to Ms. Sullivan for bringing up the, uh, Big Valley Groundwater Management Zone Commission. Um, that, I hadn't planned to speak on this item, but as I was walking out, I realized that was also in the municipal service review of, of LAFCO from 2014. And it mentions that the commission meets 10 times a year to assist and guide staff in implementation of the Big Valley Groundwater Management Plan. And I'm not sure if what Ms. Sullivan said is that they no longer meet?
Do you know anything about?
I believe she mentioned 2008, 2010, and then maybe nothing else after that.
I don't think they're meeting now.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I'm not sure why, and I don't remember even who was on the makeup of that, but I know people who were on the, on that committee and they're not meeting anymore. So, I, I don't think they're, they're available. So, it would be time to revisit that. I'm not sure why. I, I see Tom Smythe here, but I'm not gonna put him on the spot. It may have been going while he was still here, but, um, he, he might know. He was here when water was invented, so.
Okay. It also mentions, in the 2014 review, the Clear Lake Basin Resource Management Committee, the RMC, which developed all these things, of which the, uh, the Big Valley Groundwater Management Zone Commission went under, but that RMC, uh, also went by the wayside during the economic downturn. And in the service review, it said that, for lack of interest in participation, uh, because there were less funds available to agency employees for travel. So, just as concerned as you're making if you have to do per diem or travel reimbursements, I mean, that was one of the reasons apparently people didn't come to the Clear Lake, I mean, to these meetings and serve on these commissions. So, I guess my, I was trying to understand what the difference would be between this, but it sounds like it's funding, uh, between this, this new GSA and what is already supposed to be in place. So, along with, uh, the flood zone, the benefit, zones of benefit for flood, this other one is supposed to be in place with committee members and meet 10 times per year. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry.
If I could just interrupt and, and address the, the local agency component of this, and, and, and there've been some suggestions that other, uh, already standing committees perhaps be considered as the GSA. The, the state is pretty clear that the local agency means the local public agency, agency that has water supply, water management, or land use responsibilities within that basin. And so, that is why I'm recommending that the Board of Directors of the Watership Protection District, which has the statutory responsibility for surface and groundwater, uh, in the county, be the GSA.
Thank you.
I'm Brock Zoller from Kelseyville, and I'd like to thank you for considering my comments. I agree with Ms. Sullivan, really, that, uh, as far as we know, and, uh, this is primarily the data that I think that was generated by Tom Smythe who's here today. And I, I think if you put some pressure on him, he, maybe he's gonna come up here and talk anyway. But he's done a lot of well monitoring and I, I think it shows that there's recovery of the wells annually from, uh, connection to stream flow. And so, the, the basin is not really that impacted. And, uh, the state really has passed these laws because in the San Joaquin Valley, uh, that's not true. Uh, they're losing their groundwater, uh, facility annually, and there's no recovery of it annually the way we get here. So, that's the reason. And the, I'm, I'm kind of concerned because this issue was in your hands, frankly. And, uh, you were able to, uh, put out a report through the last two, through De León's, uh, predecessor here that, uh, about our, uh, particular Big Valley, uh, basin and, uh, that was denied by Department of Water Resources. And there was not a opportunity really to repair some of the reasons that they caused the denial. And so, that kinda was in your hands. It was in your hands. And so, I'm, I'm a little bit concerned it's gonna be put back in your hands because we missed an opportunity to be a low-priority, uh, basin, really. If all we had to do was repair some of the things that Ms. Sullivan was talking about, the fact that we don't put on as much water here in Lake County. We only missed by a half point of being called a low-priority basin. So, it's, it's very clear if we can, you know, amend that, uh, we probably are a low-priority basin. We don't even need this particular, uh, management commission that we're talking about here. On the other hand, if we're, if we're stuck with that, I am certainly want to have it be monitored here locally exactly the way you're talking about, because I don't want the state to do it, just like, uh, Rob Brown says. But what, we need to, in parallel, we need to re-submit this document. Even though they say it's too late, our understanding is they will work with us. They will consider the reparations that we might suggest, showing that, uh, the well, the well data, perhaps showing that the district of water recovers and showing that we do, and we also tell them how much we do and don't irrigate by acre. And so, they, I believe they would reconsider and we would be in a low-priority zone. So, I just, I just ask you to put two things on the table here. One of them, to form the commission in case we get denied again. But follow this, uh, this, uh, this process here of reconstructing the data and giving it back to the state and letting them review it again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I respond to that?
Supervisor Brown?
Okay, so, I, I get what you're saying, Brock, and I, um, I'm always willing to take credit for blame. Actually, more blame than credit. But, um, um, Scott, what, what was the process? What, you know, that it was denied? Because here's the thing, we don't collect the data. We, we approve whatever report is given to us. And unless somebody else that has different data gets up and challenges it.
I'm not sure. We were not contacted ever about this report. It was, it was through Mr. De León's predecessor.
Yeah, no, I get that.
He put the report out there. And I, I don't think Farm Bureau or anyone other ag groups were really contacted about what the report looked like.
Well, I think we all, we all fell asleep on that one. So, you know, we, we do need to keep, keep vigilant on it. I'm not sure what happened as far as why it was denied. And I know I didn't create the, I didn't create the document, so.
And I, I, I can't speak to that, but, but, uh, his suggestion is, is, is a good one. I mean, he's, he's agreeing that we need to keep moving with the GSA formation, which we can't get sidetracked from that. We, is, that's imperative. Or the state's gonna come in and manage these, this basin, and that, we do not want that. However, I also agree with him that if there's an opportunity to push back to the state with either revised numbers or additional information where, uh, the state would reevaluate the basin and, and its priority, uh, and get the basin out of its medium priority status, then, then I think that that's worth an effort.
Yeah. I think it should be our priority.
Do you think working with the Farm Bureau, we'd be able to come up with those numbers to resubmit?
Well, I, I'm gonna presume, yes.
I have Brenna shaking her head.
Yeah. I, I'm gonna presume that we would be able to do that. You bet.
I, I think that would be a.
No, I think that's a good, I, I think that's a great suggestion and, and, uh, and if that was, we were able to do that, uh, then, you know, that changes things because the, a low-priority basin is not subjected to, to the requirements. However, you would still have the GSA in place and, and should things change, uh, you, you've complied with the state law.
Thank you.
Yep.
Brenna, I wanted to add some. Go ahead. Don't worry about the three minutes.
Yeah, so just a couple of quick clarifications on that. The state DWR has two files that they use in some of those ag-specific indicators. And so, they already sent me those files. It would be really easy to go in and send them the corrected data. That's what we did in Upper Lake and Scots Valley, and it, it, it worked. Um, one other point of clarification, when I mentioned the Big Valley Groundwater Management Zone Commission, it was more suggestion as the advisory board, not as the sitting GSA, because that has to be a public agency and we don't have enough time to create an alternate GSA. So, uh, suggesting that is the advisory board for that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Terry Daranek. I live at 2181 Bell Hill Road in Kelseyville, right in the Big Valley Basin. My husband and I farm seven acres of wine grapes. Our property is supported by two wells, one of which is an ag well. The other one is, provides for our domestic water use. And we use drip irrigation for this crop. As a wine grape grower, as well as a resident in the Big Valley Basin, I come to you today because I believe I have a vested interest in sustainable groundwater. The GSA process, which Scott describes, gives us, I think, at this point, our best assurance that we are gonna be in control of what happens with our groundwater. So, I hope fervently that you, as our Board of Supervisors, will act on this quickly. I also, um, am very interested in ensuring that agriculture has a voice on the advisory board. Um, I think it's pretty clear that ag is gonna bear the brunt of the, both the cost potentially, as well as restrictions, regulations, new requirements and so forth that may come out of, with the implementation plan. So, I hope that you will consider this. Kind of an aside, uh, there's been some conversation about a, a dual process. At least, I hope you've gotten that message, that we would also go back and see if we could get our basin reprioritized. I think there's value in doing that, but I, from what I understand of this process, it's critical that we don't just follow that path, but rather that we form the GSA and move along that path as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Since I was asked to speak, I'm gonna speak. Uh, Tom Smythe, I was the Water Resources Engineer for the Watership Protection District for 29 years. I retired three years ago. I agree with Ms. Sullivan and the Mr. Zoller and all the speakers that we need to look at reprioritizing that basin. She's cor, Ms. Sullivan was correct that, uh, the data they use, I argued against it when it was originally prioritized before the Sigma Act was, uh, passed. They use some very broad data. The groundwater levels that were monitored by the state and the district did show that in the last 20 years, actually, the last 30 years, the groundwater levels have been coming up where they go in the summer. And that's, a lot of that is the change in irrigation practices and then the change from grapes or from pears to grapes. I'm not sure what's happened in the last three years. I haven't followed it. But, uh, I would be willing to, uh, assist as necessary. But I do recommend that the board does form the GSA just in case it's needed and to move forward with this. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Is there any further public comment?
Hi, I'm Mike Bombard. I'm, I'm a scenery hydrogeologist, GHD. I just wanted to bring to the board's attention that, uh, there are some, some critical dates that we need to work with if you're going to get the funding. Because the funding, um, window closes on November 1st. It's gonna open up September 9th, close just November 1st for the, uh, grant funding. And because of the number of disadvantaged communities within the Kelseyville area, the, it's very likely that, uh, you'll qualify for 100% funding. You will not need a match due to the fact of, due to the disadvantaged communities you have. So, moving forward with the GSA, getting it done very quickly is imperative because it's, uh, there's a 90-day process to get a GSA fully formed. But if you have the, all the paperwork in and, and into the DWR, at that point, you can at least go ahead and put in your grant funding application and get them done. But again, by November 1st.
Thank you.
Oh, and one other thing, uh, domestic well users are, uh, not a part of Sigma. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment before I bring it back to the board?
My name's Peggy King, and I live in Kelseyville, actually Buckingham now, but I used to live downtown Kelseyville. And I worked on the Kelseyville Water, uh, Improvements back in 2005. And I've been following Sigma for quite some time. And, uh, just wanted to mention that, uh, GHD prepared a really nice flyer that folks might be interested in seeing. And Mike, you brought some of those today? And, uh, we'll leave some for people to look at. It, it really explains where we're at now and what the next steps are for, for basins whose alternative plans were not approved. So, I think, you know, I, we're in, we're in, uh, good shape right now. But I think that this is, you know, we have to act and we've gotta keep moving.
Thank you, Peggy. Any further public comment? See, no movement, then I'll bring it back to the board. For any more questions or comments, or offering the resolution. Supervisor Simon?
The only question that I had is, is the new industries that we're attempting to establish here, both with the hemp and the cannabis, will that be part of the board? Or is that considered agricultural? I mean, we have new industries coming in that are going to be using water. I know the cannabis industry is being asked to do, uh, some, you know, obviously, water uses and other things, um, hydrological reports, uh, for their industry. So, um, I, I just asked the question.
Yep.
It's a new ag crops, will that be considered agricultural or?
Well.
Or ag product?
I'm not gonna answer for Scott, but I, it's, we're not gonna be picking a member for each type of crop. It's just gonna be ag. And so, if people apply, we consider each application. And it's up to us to determine.
Asking the question, it hadn't been mentioned, so it was mentioned.
So, u- under the recommended action, I'm, I'm gonna propose, uh, that, uh, instead of offering the resolution, that, uh, you indicate concurrence with the framework that we proposed with the resolution. And then, uh, pending your concurrence with that, uh, subject to public notice, we'll bring this back to your board for, uh, adoption of the resolution on August the 27th. Works fine.
Okay, so I need somebody to make that motion or off, is it still an offer? Remember consensus?
Yeah, just need a motion.
Okay. I think we have consensus.
Yes.
I do have one final question.
Yes.
You offered to, uh, put CDD also potentially on this board. Sorry to ask this, uh, in, in a public manner, but you, you've spoken with CDD. They have the time and ability to take part in this?
Well, no, I haven't. Be, be honest with you, no, I have not talked to CDD about this, but.
Well, don't say anything.
I'm not going to.
Don't blow it for us.
He's probably watching. I, I just think that that's appropriate.
Okay.
And again, this is gonna be a board-appointed committee. They're, they're the agency in the county. And specifically to your question about some of the land use things that are going on in the basin, I, I, I think it would be appropriate that CDD, uh, have a seat at that table. But again, that's gonna be a board-appointed committee. And, and if not, then that's.
I, I do too. I agree with that. I think, you know, the water usage is all part of planning. You know, what, what direction we're gonna go and, you know, continue to grow. And that's their job, planning. So, I, I totally agree with that. Uh, you know, we, we do want them to have buy-in, not throw more work on them, but it is part of, part of what, what they do, that's planning, so.
And the reason I haven't spoken with them is I just added that this morning as I was sitting here, so.
Nice, nice.
Okay.
Is there anything further?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
Okay, with that, we'll move to our 9.5 item, our 9:45 a.m. item. Discussion and consideration of impacts of Lake Pillsbury in the event Scott Dam is decommissioned. And it's possible county action in response to PGE's decision to withdraw the license application for the Potter Valley project. Supervisor Crandall?
Six point, the 6.5 item?
Yes.
And so, um, I think we have a, a slideshow of some pictures. And I also wanted to invite Frank Lynch and Carol Senquini up. They were part of the Lake Pillsbury Alliance. They were, uh, uh, they took us on a tour two weeks back on the first. And so, I'd like to invite them to come sit up and, um, be a part of the discussion so that that way they're not limited to three minutes in case there's something they wanna add to, um, the discussion on this item. And so, I'll just give a brief discuss, uh, brief, uh, overview of this slideshow that we have. There's some, some other, some other videos that I had, but unfortunately, my thumb was in front of the camera. My brother says I'm like a Neanderthal with electronic equipment, so forgive me. Or you'd have had some good video of, uh, of an eagle that we seen out there. But, um, nonetheless, this is the, uh, on our, our drive back, um, from Lake Pillsbury. But nonetheless, this is the, on our drive back from Lake Pillsbury, we took the Elk Mountain Way. We went through Potter Valley and then came through that road. And then when we, when we went home, we took the Elk Mountain Way. And this is the, this is the burning scar on the side of the mountain. And so that's, that's, that's what you're seeing here. So if you can go to the next, same thing, it's just another view of it and showing the decimation that the, that the Mendocino complex fire conducted on the, well, the ranch fire, if you will. So next, and this is just a, one, one side is actually the burn scar, and then the other side is, is when we were in Potter Valley showing a, well, actually, no, that's both burn scar. I didn't, I thought maybe, because we did stop in Potter Valley and take a couple of pictures as well, and I think that's on one of the further slides. So next slide. So this is the dam itself. This is Scott Dam. And Frank took us on his pontoon boat, and this is where we took a picture of, of the dam. I had a really good video, but again, I think that was one of my thumb. So, okay. And so this is just, actually, if you, we didn't want to move closer, but in, in the horizon there, there was tule elk on the side of, of the beach over there. And, and so they're, they're in the back, and they were, there was so many of them. It was beautiful. And, you know, we didn't want to scare them and move forward on, move closer. So we looked at them with binoculars. So, yeah, so next, yes. And so I'm not sure exactly, maybe Frank, is that, yeah, that's right, Snow Mountain. We wanted to accentuate the fact that Snow Mountain was in the background there. And, and actually, this lake was way bigger than I envisioned when I, when I, before I went out there. This is the first time I ever went out to Lake Pillsbury, and I thought it was, you know, a little smaller. It was actually really big. So there's Snow Mountain in the horizon, and next. And so this is just another, another picture of how, how beautiful the lake looks, you know, and so just wanted to encapsulate that. So, next. This is actually, I think Carol's cabin, and just wanted to show how, we got to stop there for a brief moment and take a break, and just wanted to show that most of the cabins in that area look like such, and were in these areas. And so this is the, just an example. This is the forest that surrounds that actual area where they, where they have their cabins at. This was, this was the Potter Valley side that we entered on, and we were just, I think those were AT&amp;T lines. We thought they may have been PG&E lines, but they were actually, I think, AT&amp;T lines. And so we were just like worried because there was, on the next one, you'll see, it was leaning over, so we were like, oh, man, what's, what's going on here? So, yeah, I got out and took a picture of it, and, and hopefully those are, like I said, AT&amp;T wires rather than power lines. So. And so I think this is just, this actually is back on the other side where there's more burn scar. We just wanted to, of course, get more of those pictures to show how important that lake is to the water being used for firefighting and fire suppression. So next, next slide, just another example. More of the Scott Dam, and then I think the other side is where the...
I think that's where it's at.
Yeah, that's the resort. And there was like a gas station there and all that, or not gas station, but where you could fill up and whatnot. And so it was just, you know, getting all of that in. Just another, I think that's one of this, my, one of my other pictures of the lake. I wish I would have got better, the video better. So that would have been nice to see that, that eagle. I mean, just like it came out on cue, and I think Frank had said that, it's like someone was on the side and said, make sure the eagle goes out now so they see him too. So it was awesome. Next slide. Again, the tule elk, and I think that's just a closer view of that. Next slide. Not sure exactly. I just know there was just a, I think that was on the way back, when we were coming back to, yeah. Oh, another view of Snow Mountain. That's right, that's what it was. So next slide. And I think that's it. And so, so this, that was a, that was a, that's just some highlights of the tour that we, that we conducted on the first. And Lake Pillsbury Alliance, Frank and Carol were, were there to, to meet us and give us a nice tour of, of the area, and took us on the pontoon boat. Just wanted to give a background on this, and I'll just read this off. The, the Potter Valley Project is a hydroelectricity park project. It's a small hydropower project consisting of two dams, the Cape Horn Dam, which impounds the river into the Van Arsdale Reservoir, and the Scott Dam, which creates the Lake Pillsbury Reservoir. PG&E is the current licensee of this project. The project stores runoff from the Upper Eel River Basin and diverts approximately 90,000 acre feet of water, feet of water, each year into the Russian River in order to generate hydroelectric power. The Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, FERC, oversees PG&E's operation of the project. In April 2017, PG&E submitted notice to the FERC of its intent to renew its hydropower license. PG&E's current license expires in 2022, requiring it to make a new application no later than April 2020. However, in January of this year, PG&E withdrew its notice of intent and its pre-application document, discontinuing the license application process. In March of this year, the FERC has issued a notice soliciting applications. The notice of set, notice set a deadline of 120 days from the date of that notice, July 1st, 2019, for interested applicants other than existing licensees to file notices of intent, pre-application documents, as well as requests to complete the pre-filling, filing stages of the license processes. In the event that no other applicant files an application for a license on April 14th, 2020, the current licenses will be provided with written notice that no timely application for the project has been filed. Within 90 days of such written notice, the current licensee must file a schedule for filing a surrender application for this project. Congressman Jared Huffman brought all stakeholders together through a creation of a Potter Valley Ad-Hoc Committee. That committee, which includes Lake County, Mendocino County, and Humboldt County, among its participants, have very significant goals. These goals include to minimize or avoid adverse impacts to water supply, reliability, fisheries, water quality, and recreation in the Russian, in Eel River Basins, to respect tribal rights and their traditional connections to aquatic life, water, and cultural resources in both basins, to minimize and mitigate adverse impacts to Lake County, including Lake Pillsbury businesses, residents, and to ensure accountable governance and financial viability, including addressing potential liabilities. Lake County is a party to and has been involved both in the FERC action and the Ad-Hoc Committee through the participation of the county supervisor in District 3. Furthermore, a coalition is formed consisting of the Sonoma County Water Agency, the Mendocino Inland Water and Power Commission, Cal Trout, which has proposed a project planning agreement to address the region's water supply and to protect endangered salmon species in the Eel River and Upper Russian River Basin. Not to mention Humboldt has also joined this party, and I also, it's also my understanding that the Eel, not the Eel, I'm sorry, the Round Valley Tribe has also been dressed as an in-kind contribution addition to the NOI. And it, and then they've opened that discussion up for Lake County. As opposed to coming up with $100,000 for the study, we may be able to provide an in-kind contribution rather than coming up with the cash. So I just wanted to make sure that that was emphasized when we talk about the minute order that was approved on June 25th. And so that was actually next on the list. On June 25th, our board approved a minute order expressing our support of the pre-application notice of intention to be filed with FERC and our intention to pursue funding in the order to participate in a feasibility study. I have here also just two resolutions, one that was conducted by Humboldt, one that was conducted by Mendocino, and then we had conducted one last year on August 21st already that states all of the things that, that, that express our support of the Potter Valley Project in keeping the Scott Dam. So I think with the minute order, we just need to readjust and, and adjust the verbiage so that that way we can enter into the NOI. And without further ado, I'll allow Frank and Carol to add any, anything to what I just stated in the...
Thank you for giving us the opportunity. I read with interest the staff report that was prepared. I thought it was very well done, but wanted to add just a few comments regarding that. With regard to the property tax assessments that are there and the number of structures, I wanted to be sure that in your economic impact report, it included the home sites, which although on leased United Forest Service land, pay unsecured property taxes for possessory interest. So that could add to your, the number of structures on your reports and also your revenue that comes in. I wanted to mention that Lake Pillsbury property values are very likely to decline. It would affect Lake County overall. I think we talked about this last time a little bit, without the lake. There could be a minor effect on the Quagga Muscle Program because we have an active registration of our boats and vehicles up there. So additional revenue that could get decreased. And then also our Lake Pillsbury Fire Protection District, that our property taxes generate revenue for them. So they could be tapped by this. And I wanted to mention also that not just the homeowners, but campers and Lake County residents that go to Lake Pillsbury enhance sales tax. And one of the problems right now with that is simply the fact that we had the fires the last few years and two years of drought before that. So if your revenue amount is small, it's very likely because tourism in the area was significantly reduced because of this. I wanted to talk a little bit about the environmental impacts. I'm following, trying to follow the staff report in my comments so that there's a way for you to plug it in. We are greatly concerned about decommissioning and dam removal. We would like to see Lake County work through the shared objectives, join the NOI, and really see some honest and true feasibility studies that give us really worthwhile data for decisions about the Potter Valley Project to be made. There are a lot of studies out there now, and the studies themselves are going to bend and flow, depending upon who funded those studies. So this is an opportunity to have true scientific environmental studies that we can trust and make good decisions about as we move forward. I think there could be a tremendous impact to Lake County if we move to decommissioning or dam removal. Sediment, prior mining, logging, all kinds of things that will impact hundreds of thousands possibly of cubic yards of sediment that would have to be dealt with in Lake County need to be considered. And that was a, a very good point that was in the staff report. I think that it's fair to say that when the Ad-Hoc Committee was formed by Jared Huffman, there was an attempt, I think, to make a broad stakeholder group, have a broad representation of those of us in Lake County and in Lake Pillsbury Basin. But the reality and the truth is that Lake County has not had a good, strong representation on that committee. I don't know why, but I'm very pleased to see all of you taking interest. I think it's going to be beneficial to Lake County in the, in the long run. And I think that it's also very important to keep in mind that repeatedly Lake Pillsbury Basin stakeholders have been denied any kind of opportunity to have input to this Ad-Hoc Committee. And there was like one single stakeholder meeting that was going to be held last January by PG&E, and in the middle of the month, it was canceled. Obviously, they declared bankruptcy in the middle of the month, and I, you know, they decided they weren't doing any more studies. But it was a feeble attempt, in my opinion. And the reason for that opinion is because the Ad-Hoc Committee's been meeting almost two years. And so I just feel that it's important for you to have some of this background, not that I want to persuade you one way or the other, I just want you to know why we've been really seeking and hoping for Lake County, County support on this, because it does affect all of you and your own constituents here, and we're constituents, we're taxpayers too. I don't mean to run on and on. I just had a lot of, I'm missing, excuse me, just a moment. The one goal that I would, there are a couple of goals today, would be a minute action, a minute action or a revised reso for you to join the NOI parties in their agreement. I know that Janet Pawley has expressed, she said, would be very happy to invite you into that group. I also know that if you join that group, and even before, it would be very important to have an alternate on this, for the Eel Russian River Commission, for the Ad-Hoc, and probably for this agreement as well. Thank you very much for the opportunity, and thank you to those that came to the basin. Appreciate it.
I think my comments would be brief and more general in nature. It's amazing to me how many people don't know where they get their water from. And you talk to people in, so I, I live in Sonoma County. I live in an area that benefits from the water that comes from the Potter Valley Project. But it's amazing, people don't really know. They think their water comes from Lake Sonoma if they live even north of Lake Sonoma. You talk to people within the Lake Pillsbury Basin itself, and they don't, many of them don't realize the potential impact all these current actions are having and what that means to the future of the lake. Many people don't really take it seriously. So I think if people realized where we're really at, you'd have a lot more people expressing opinions where they're, about the lake and what their values would be. I did want to say that we were grateful that we had supervisors and staff come, and I'd like to extend an offer to the rest of...
Yes.
The supervisors and/or staff, if you'd like to take a tour anytime, more than welcome to show you around if that would help you in your understanding of what is actually there. What we tried to show those who attended was there is really a community there. There's, we're a diverse group. There's a lot of characters in the area, but there's, there is a sense of community within the basin. And it's not a small community. It's, it's large, given its remoteness. In years past, there was more economic benefit, I think, to the area because we had, we didn't have the years of fire, the years of drought. There used to be three resorts in the lake. It used to be seeming, in my impressions, there used to be more people up in the lake. But it seems to be coming back slowly, and we do appreciate that. I was up there this last weekend, and I just had in my mind, what does the lake do for the local economy? And I just happened to note a couple of things as I was just hanging out. I saw two trucks from different construction companies up there who were doing work on cabins. I saw Kelsey, Kelseyville lumber truck bringing building materials up there. I heard...
They were lost. They were looking for Kelseyville, for cars. That happens.
Oh, come on.
GPS.
They're bringing roofing materials up. I don't know if there was a permit. The...
Services.
There was someone I talked to who was missing, had needed a part for their boat. They're heading down, I think, to Hillside Honda to get a boat part. There's a couple people I talked to, two separate groups I heard talking about going to the Blue Wing, maybe on their way out to go to lunch. So there are people who, you know, use the area, and it is a benefit locally here. I just think that, you know, whatever position Lake County wants to make, I mean, Humboldt County changed their resolution. They had come out at one point saying they called for the decommission of the dam, but they saw that it was in their best interest to remain a part of the NOI, and they amended their motion to delete that language, which was deemed offensive and non-collaborative, and they revised their resolution. Lake County may think what they want to think about decommission the dam, but, you know, I think it's imperative that you do make a choice to consider science, to consider the studies, to keep your voice active in this. Because if you don't act now to be part of this new coalition and just merely comment later when the final report comes out from FERC, your voice doesn't have much less meaning. So you're, we'd be taking a step to create your own future. And this is a regional, regional resource. It's a regional issue, and it needs a regional resolution.
It does.
So thank you for your time.
Yeah.
Supervisor Sabatier?
I just wanted to add, and Supervisor Crandall can elaborate if he needs, that we also did meet with Senator McGuire, who brought up the Potter Valley Project and shared interest in assisting us to find a good resolution. So I just want to say we're, Lake County is definitely not alone in this, in this, in this battle to try to figure out how to make this work. And I do want to make one statement as well. I know that Eddie shared some numbers with me, some economics numbers. And while that does make a difference, we are a rural community, and if we somehow say no to this, what community is next? We have so many rural communities, maybe not as far off the path as Lake Pillsbury, but we have so many rural communities, and we pride ourselves in being a rural community. And I think that we need to fight for our rural communities. So that, I just wanted to make that statement, that I think this could have some longer-lasting effects if we say, eh, it's, it's, we'll see what happens. I think that we need to have a dog in the fight.
Supervisor Brown?
So I appreciate the passion for keeping it for all the reasons, economics, environment, I'll get into that in a little bit. But it all comes down to money. It all comes down to being able to afford how to maintain it. Can't make PG&E do it. The state's not going to do it. I mean, if they do, it's going to cost somebody something. County can't do it. We have to pay, you have to come up with a solution rather than say, no, we don't want this to happen, so you guys figure it out. With all due respect to Jared Huffman, who I've never met, it's not his area. His first priority is his district. Saving the dam may not be his priority for his district. Saving the dam may not be his priority for his district. So I wouldn't rely on that. McGuire, to some extent, but it's more, it goes to the federal issue. You've got to get Garamendi engaged in this thing, but not rely upon them to come up with a solution. And I'm just going to throw this out there, I threw it out there before, you may have to start looking at a benefit zone. What's it going to cost to maintain that dam? And break that down on who's going to pay for it, and how much they're going to pay each year, and vote in a benefit zone. That's just a suggestion, but that's not going to, that's got to happen at your level. And Eddie can help you with that, and I'm happy to work with him on it, I've done a lot of benefit zones. And so I can, we can make that, make those numbers work. But that's what you've got to do. You can't, you can't come in and identify a problem without being part of the solution, because if you rely on the government to come up with a solution, or even PG&E for that matter, you're going to get screwed.
This will be the third time I've mentioned to you that, you know, shoot me as a taxpayer, and other taxpayers will shoot me. We're more than willing to be part of it.
Well, and I appreciate that, and nobody wants to pay, I don't want to pay anymore either, but you have to realize that if you get the benefit from it, you've got to pay for it. And I think you spread it all out, spread the love around, it's worth doing. As far as the environment goes, and we may be part of that, you know, that maybe there's some funds available. There's a groundwater source up there. We spent a lot of time today talking on groundwater for a lot of different areas, and it's the goal that we have up here. And you talked about the eagle, but you just take that dam out and see what happens. There's no more fish, there's no more birds, there's no more, you know, there's no reason for wildlife to be there. Now, after you've had the fires there, all that water's going to be running right off down into the Russian River, you've got no water retention. I mean, it'd just be a nightmare mess, and it wouldn't take that long for that. You talk about all these houses and stuff up there, why would anybody want to live there? You wouldn't have any water, there's nothing there.
You're bringing up exactly the key points there. First of all, I do want to say that Jared Huffman is not supportive of the dam, so we set that aside.
I anticipated that.
The NOI, the purpose of the NOI, and the reason, I believe, for Lake County to join it is precisely for the reasons that you're just stating. One is because their key component, the beginning component, is the feasibility study. And that feasibility study is to identify plan for funding and for a future regional entity that could include state, federal, local, we don't know. But right now, there's been no effort until these parties joined to actually try to use the best science, the best environmental folks available to see if this is feasible, not only for the area, but for a regional, unique entity to take it over, find a regional solution to take it over. I think that in itself is what's so worthwhile. Because that puts a lot of key players right there, and they're going to be free to go out and find the right complexity, the right funding sources, the right entities to run it regionally rather than PG&E.
Yeah, well, like I said...
And the environment was a key, too. Nobody's talked about the environment.
It all ties together. I mean, imagine, I mean, it's not as remote, but imagine if Blue Lakes wasn't there anymore. You know, there's a lot of areas that we have around here, just imagine that, just imagine if it was gone. It wouldn't look the same. Blue Lakes won't go anywhere because they're not relied upon a dam. This could go away. This could go away in a year.
There's been no study or discussion about the 100-year-old ecosystem habitat up there in any of the ad hoc discussions, not one study. That environment should be as important to all of us as the fish passage. It's all ecosystem, it's all habitat, it's all worthy of consideration.
And it's not one or the other, it's not, you know, if you have, if you care about the environment and you don't care about the people, which is so often heard, you know, it's a divisive discussion, but this isn't the case here. It's all part of the deal. The environment needs people up there to look after it and take care of it, make sure that things are taken care of. People up there need that environment that's up there. I'm grateful that Eddie's bringing this up prior to this. It's just been a wait-and-see type thing, type approach, and, you know, I didn't know where it was, you know, we've got enough going on in my district without keeping track of that, so I appreciate him bringing that, bringing this up. But I would, I would get Garamendi's office engaged, but I would also engage Mike Thompson's office, because prior to, three years ago, it was his district. He's very familiar with it.
Yes, he is.
And, you know, we have the benefit of two congressmen representing Lake County, and I think we should engage both of them to make sure that, you know, it's in our best interest. Not that we don't care what happens in Sonoma County, I think they'll be fine, they'll be okay. We still, we need this dam left in place, but we need to figure out a way where we can take care of it. And, by the way, the power lines have insulators and transformers, transmission lines for communication don't. That's how you tell the difference.
Any further board? Not sure if I opened it up to public comment, I don't think I did. Is there any public comment on this item?
I'd like to make a comment.
If you could state your name, then you have three minutes.
My name's Mark Heald, and I am actually a member of the Westshore Campers Association that's up Lake Pillsbury, also a member of the Alliance. And Westshore was actually brought together back in 1958, Patterson's Pillsbury Pines, who's a resort now that's left the community up there. And, but getting to the bottom line, I've been there since 1968, and all these lovely people are my family now. And I'm a camper, and we have 80 campsites in Westshore. We lease a piece of property right now from PG&E, it's about 16 acres. And those 80 campsites, there's three generations of people that are families that come and use the area, and we enjoy the area. And there's many people that don't realize, that's just some of my background, but there's many people that don't realize that right now, there's three rivers that come into Lake Pillsbury. There's Salmon Creek, it's dry right now, there's not a drip of water coming in. There's the Eel River that's slowed down to just a trickle, and that's coming in. When you looked at Snow Mountain, that's the mouth of the Eel River there. But behind that, it's just a very small, couple inches deep piece of water that's coming in. And then there's the Rice Fork River that comes in, it too is down to a trickle now. So at one point, if that dam is removed, all that water would be in the ocean. It won't get into the Russian River if the complex, for the Potter Valley complex, is removed. That's the only way the water can get from Lake Pillsbury into the Russian River. Has to go through that tunnel, it's a redwood tunnel that's like six feet diameter, and that's what it is right now. It's this old redwood pipe that was built. So just, people don't understand that. The next time you go to Lake Pillsbury, take that tour, and any one of us would be happy to give you a ride up to the rivers to see what's actually coming in this time of year. And we had one of our biggest watershed seasons of a long time, and already, there's very little water coming in. I just wanted to make that known, a lot of people don't understand that. There won't be any water coming down the river, there'll just be a trickle from our end.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Chairwoman, Supervisors. My name's Scott Greason, I'm the Conservation Director of Friends of the Eel River. The eel has suffered serious and ongoing harms from Scott and Cape Horn dams for a century now. Friends of the Eel was formed to end the diversion and remove the Eel River dams. But we've come to the table in Representative Huffman's ad hoc group because we see his proposed two-basin solution as the best path to a win-win solution for Eel River fisheries and Russian River water. The price we paid for our seat at that table was agreeing to support a continued diversion of Eel River water to the Russian River. As you've heard, PG&E could not make the Potter Valley project work. They're losing $30 for every dollar they make in electric generation. Nobody has offered the hundreds of millions of dollars necessary to keep Scott Dam in place. Nobody's willing to sign up for the enormous liabilities around a century-old dam built next to a major earthquake fault with a reservoir laden with mercury-heavy sediments. The first of Representative Huffman's co-equal goals is fish passage that really works. The science is now in on this question, and it's clear that neither trappen haul nor a fish ladder will be nearly as effective as dam removal. Now, Lake County has been a part of Representative Huffman's ad hoc from its inception. You have a seat at that table. But if your position is now that Scott Dam removal is unacceptable, that's like Friends of the Eel saying, "Never mind, that diversion has to end." You're telling the rest of us at that table that you don't even want to be in the room. Now, Lake County's position today is simply not compatible with the two-basin solution framework. It is a demand that someone else bear the cost of maintaining an unsafe, money-losing, fish-killing dam so a few dozen Lake County voters won't have to deal with change. That boat won't float. There's every reason to believe, in fact, that Lake County will benefit from dam removal in many ways. The crews that will take down Scott Dam will buy a lot more than $10,000 worth of ice in a year. The river will attract boaters and fly fishers, and they will buy ice, too, and they will rent cabins. The Lake Pillsbury reservoir as it presently exists offers benefits to Lake County. But a healthy Eel River and renewed Eel River fisheries will also offer real benefits to Lake County. Finally, I want to offer you a cautionary example. Siskiyou County on the Klamath decided to fight the removal of Klamath River dams at all costs. The result has been that they are left out of the deal, and they're getting nothing. Lake County has a choice today. You can get on board with the two-basin solution and secure mitigation funds and adaptive benefits, or you can keep fighting Scott Dam removal and risk getting nothing, like Siskiyou County is. Thank you for your time.
Well, I missed your name and where you're from.
My name is Scott Greason, I'm the Conservation Director for Friends of the Eel River. I work in Eureka.
Got it.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you, Scott.
Lance Williams, Lake County resident. Now, I moved to Lake County because there's lakes here, and we have three that come up on the map quite often, and I really don't want to see one disappear. As a gentleman came in before, said that there was many tributaries going into this dam now. I looked at an 1892 map, and the Eel River is not the key river going into it. That same 1892 map, only Upper Lake was the only road into that area. So what I'm seeing is someone from the Eel River saying, "Hey, do what we say, or else." But, you know, I went up there last weekend, I saw the Tule Elk, and I talked to a gentleman, I talked to a few people who thought that half that lake was owned by Mendocino. False information. That whole lake is owned by Lake County, it's on Lake County land. PG&E owns that land. But this is a Lake County establishment that many people in Lake County have never been to. It's one of the, one of the big lakes. So, I mean, I am for fish, but I'm a fisherman, but I'm told after a certain amount of time the salmon are not going to come back, because they have to start in the original place. But my point is that, that there is four tributaries, main tributaries, it's not just the eel. And I don't like other counties coming into our county saying, "We're just going to rip out your lake," just like that. So I have a big issue with it. Now, obviously, I don't know if we can afford it, so I'm with Rob Brown, can we afford this? You know, or is this thing, can it be, I was looking, it could be upgraded. I think we need to look at some solutions, but I'm a little concerned, growing up in Marin County, finding out that Marin County's trying to get on this board to control this water. It's about water wars. So I think more research needs to be done. I'm wondering if something can maybe be voted on in the county that, you know, that maybe we have some power, because I think this is a little bit ridiculous, that another county, some board is saying, "We're going to save the fish, and we're just going to rip our, rip your dam out." We also have another dam that is Indian Valley Reservoir, I don't want that disappearing. And, you know, 10 years, it could all be gone. And we have one lake, and that's all we have, besides the Blue Lakes, of course. So, and again, as Rob was saying, there is no dam there. So I am very concerned about this. It is a community, it is Lake County, these are Lake County residents, and again, we have Humboldt, Mendo, Sonoma, everyone else saying, "We're going to rip this dam out." And whoa, 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 that's not okay. And again, I don't have a solution yet, but I want more time, and I want other counties to be able to come here. If they're doing this, why haven't they come on the board, saying, "Hey, we're going to rip, we're going to rip out your property?" But again, the other maps, the old maps, show that it's not the Eel River that was the main river going through there. So I think there is an issue, and again, I want the fish to survive. There are other fish ladders that are out there that are not billions of dollars, you know, it sounds like someone just picked the most expensive Ferrari on the lot and said, "Hey, this is what it's going to cost." So thanks for all your work, guys, I really appreciate it, and thanks for coming to the table on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Lance.
Good morning, Devon Jones, Mendocino County Farm Bureau. So I appreciate this conversation today, very critical issue. Glad to continue this conversation with Supervisor Crandall, who's been engaged with the Eel Russian River Commission, as well as predecessor Supervisor Jim Steele. This is not a simple issue, as you've heard this morning, there's varying opinions, varying counties, varying interests. I guess the one thing, in reading through your document, and we fully support the continuation of the conversation with Lake County coming into the NOI, I think it's critical to have that conversation. But, you know, one point that was put in here is that other counties involved in this effort can have their needs largely met whether or not Scott Dam is decommissioned. Don't necessarily know that's true. I mean, there are a lot of issues on the table right now. Not all of us have been privy to going to the ad hoc committee. Farm Bureau was one of those entities that was not invited to that table as well. So we are working through our representatives who are at the table to understand those conversations and the very complex dialogue that's going on. So don't think that there's a one-size-fits-all approach to this. You know, people say that it's inefficient, it's uncostly. This is going through numerous renditions of licensing. The last licensing reduced the amount of water coming through that project by about 50% in order to better naturally mimic the flows going down the Upper Main Stem Eel. So people say its energy is not productive. Well, historically, it produced about three times the amount of energy what it does now. Can it produce more energy? Sure. You know, there are technologies now, there are different ways of looking at hydropower. The whole project is not going to look, in our mind, probably the way it looks today, but we don't know what that's going to look like. So don't just think that there's one option or the other, whether it's out or in, there's going to be a full gamma of these things that will be continuing to go on. But without Lake County at the table, you're not going to be part of that conversation. So Mendocino County is the only county that we've talked about this morning that has both the eel and the Russian River represented in it. So, you know, we've got multiple interests involved as well. In terms of water supply, sure, it's critical. We talked about rural communities, you know, Potter Valley, if this entire project goes away and that diversion no longer comes through, they don't have a source of water. The groundwater table there is not dependable. So that would be an expensive proposal that's been put on the table to pump water back from Lake Mendocino to Potter Valley. That's a huge agricultural area and a huge economic driver of our county, so we don't think that's necessarily the best solution. We also don't think we have water security if that, the lake diversion from the Potter Valley project goes away. There is no guarantee that we will have enough water in Lake Mendocino to provide the water supply that we do now. So there's a lot of assumptions. I guess the best analogy is now that this NOI has been approved, moving forward with FERC, is that we've opened up the tent door, now we're looking at Everest. So we've got a while to go and a big hill to climb, so thank you.
Good morning, Chair and members of the Board of Chiefs. My name is David Keller, I'm the Bay Area Director for Friends of the Eel, I'm based in Petaluma, a former council member in Petaluma. And I wanted to offer a couple of opportunities for you. Lake County has the grace and good fortune to have the headwaters of the Eel River within your boundaries. It's an extraordinary resource, and it's a resource that will be there long past any of our lives and long past the existence of this project. You have the opportunity to follow science, as one of your members talked about earlier. And that's really what the nuts and bolts of this work has been, has been to put together, when Congressman Huffman put together the ad hoc, he said very clearly, A, nobody's going to get everything they want, and if you think that you want to get everything that you are come to the table with, it's time for you to leave, because there's no solution in that. He also said that things will change, but it's going to be based on science. It's going to be based on what the fisheries need, what the water components are in both Mendocino and in Sonoma County. Clearly, it also engages in the water needs and the recreational needs in Lake County. Unfortunately, your staff report speaks as if Lake Pillsbury disappears and everything is bulldozed to the ground, there is nothing there that is of any attraction and any interest to visitors to Lake County. And yet, it's a national forest, it has the headwaters of this, hopefully, salmon-bearing river going all the way up once that dam is removed. Camping, fishing, hunting, hiking, access... Camping, fishing, hunting, hiking, accessible to the Bay Area, accessible to the coast, accessible to the Sacramento Valley. You have an extraordinary resource here. And after 100 years of this artificial reservoir being in place, it's time to look to the future and what opportunities those bring. In addition, the feasibility study that is, has been referred to, is going to be built on top of the science and the studies that were produced for the ad hoc. Because of the FERC deadlines, there is no time to start from scratch, and there's been some extraordinarily good work been done on the science and the engineering that has been presented to the ad hoc. The cost, by the way, liabilities of keeping this facility, PG&E's fish ladder, which turned out is not sufficient, that was $60 to $90 million on their part. There are additional work that has to be done on the safety of the dam. Department of, Division of Safety Dams is instituting their first study, complete study, the safety of Scott Dam in 20 years to see if it meets modern standards and is suitable for relicensing.
You could wrap it up, David.
Sure. There are a number of indications, thank you. Number of indications that it is not. You have Bartlett Springs Fault, which is an active fault within a half mile of the dam. You have foundational problems going back to 1921. You have an active landslide on the south face, and there's no spillway for flood releases. So there are a number of liabilities that come with the project as it is, and I urge you to stay involved in the ad hoc, signing on to the Two Basin Solution, because there's a lot of work to be done, and there are, in fact, significant benefits to Lake County. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So I got a question for you, if I could. And the gentleman spoke of this too. Who did this, who did this study?
For PG&E? Or which study?
For the ad hoc. You referenced a study.
Oh, there, it's numerous studies. So there's studies been on fish passage, there's studies been on water supply. A lot of the engineering and the management on the water supply has been done through Sonoma County Water Agency, but in concert with engineers from other entities as well. And I, all of that stuff is posted on the Potter Valley Project website that was established for this committee.
I just want to know, who did the study and who commissioned it?
Stuff was commissioned by the three counties and by PG&E.
Which three counties?
So it's Sonoma County, Humboldt County, Mendocino County. I'm assuming that Lake County had representative and therefore also authorized the studies as well and voting on the ad hoc.
Do you know who that representative was?
That was Mr. Steele.
Mr. Supervisor Steele.
Yes, so he was present and active in most all of the meetings.
Okay, well, he's not here, so I don't know what his involvement was as far as the commissioning of the study, and, you know, and the statistics and all that. And, you know, as we all know, you know, statistics don't lie unless liars are doing the statistics. So I'd be interested in who the liars were that were doing this and who commissioned it. And I appreciate your concern, and I also appreciate the fact that, you know, sometimes I don't know how we in Lake County got this far without, you know, help from Humboldt and Sonoma County people to come up and tell us how to do it better. And I don't really care much for the concept of either buy on to our program or lose your seat at the table, which was the threat given by Scott there. So I do have a problem with that. So if it's okay with you, I'll go ahead and ask for, you know, the questions that I need to ask in order to make the decisions that are best for my constituents, and then you guys can be my second priority.
Absolutely, and I appreciate, I appreciate your position and your skepticism. I urge you to take a look at the, all of the data has been published. It's on the website, and it's open to full review. Your representative now, Mr. Crandall, can bring any questions that you have as a board to any of those studies. Be aware, however, there is a FERC-composed deadline for when this stuff needs to be done. So within that context, I really support and urge you to take a look at the studies. If anybody in your staff, if any of your consultants have any questions about it, please comment, please ask. That's the way this is being done. All of this material is public. It's open for review and scrutiny. It's, none of it has been hidden, none of it has been set up by somebody in secret. So I urge your active participation.
Okay, Carol?
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Since Supervisor Brown had a question about Supervisor Steele's involvement in it during his term, I thought it might be helpful if I shared with you some of the key points that he had put together, some talking points that later led to a resolution of your board, and I thought maybe it would be helpful because it would give you a sense of his position. And so here are those points. The County of Lake is the originating waters for the Eel River and via inter-basin transfer through the Potter Valley Project, the Russian River. Lake County is a member of the Eel River Commission that considers the beneficial uses of those river systems and makes recommendations to agencies and entities. The water flowing from Lake County is a significant Lake County responsibility that serves both in-county and downstream users and their values. Lake Pilsbury was built to support the electro-generating project since 1908 by holding water for summer release and power generation. PG&E, as you know, announced in 2018 its intent to put the project up for auction. Lake Pilsbury provides Endangered Species Act-protected fish population support for both Eel and Russian River through water storage and releases. Lake Pilsbury supports resident populations protected by salmonoids and other species through groundwater recharge, which reenters the downstream channels. Groundwater recharge also supports local wells. Lake Pilsbury supports a significant population of Tuli elk, as Supervisor Crandall pointed out earlier. Lake Pilsbury is a significant source of local water for firefighting and forest protection. Climate change has altered the hydraulic conditions for, I may not be able to say this, anodromous fish population through drier winters, less coastal mountain water storage through snowpack and meadow resources. Stored water managed in the headwaters location offsets some of the late water needs of the ecosystem. Lake County recognizes the value of the Eel River to Native American populations, and Lake County recognizes the value of downstream agricultural interests. Lake County has a duty to make decisions in the best interest of all natural and human uses. Lake County believes the value of local lake resources and recreational values of the economy, the local economy, is best served by maintaining Scott Dam and the lake for the foreseeable future. Lake Pilsbury water storage and release is vital to beneficial downstream uses. Restoring native fish runs in the downstream Eel River will be best achieved through the headwater storage of water delivered to support the cycles until those resources can be best served. Lake County supports significant and complete studies that provide understanding of headwaters, water supply, and hydrologic cycle in climate change. So that may be the point that perhaps he was supportive of, the studies that were discussed just a moment ago. The County of Lake will participate in proposed regulatory changes to the Potter Valley Project and advocate for the best plan moving towards the interest of natural resources and its citizens. So that gives you the flavor of where Supervisor Steele stood on this project.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Brenna Sullivan, Lake County Farm Bureau. I just, we support Lake County joining the NOI and representing its own communities and residents. I do want to support everything that my counterpart from Mendocino County Farm Bureau said. Even though Potter Valley is not located in Lake County, it's closely tied to our agricultural community here, mostly through our livestock. We do source a lot of hay from Potter Valley, and is important to the agricultural fabric here in Lake County as well. I just wanted to point out that we are roughly a year past one of the largest fires in California history, the Mendocino Complex Fire, and the water supply in Lake Pilsbury was used to combat that fire. And given our history and continuing issues with fire in Lake County, it would seem prudent to maintain water supply for fire suppression. So again, Lake County Farm Bureau does support that Lake County joining the NOI and having a seat at that table. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment?
I'd like to speak one more time. Mark Heald, West Shore Camper Association, Lake Pilsbury. But there is a movie that you should probably see, and it's called A River's Last Chance. We are all too young to understand the history of the Eel River without some understanding of the history. And if you take a moment, it's a one-hour show, watch that movie, you may realize and see what's happened to our fishery. I'm an avid salmon fisherman. I loved to salmon fish, steelhead fish. What's happened to this river, it's filled in. In the 1800s, early 1800s, it was a fantastic salmon fishery until the white man came and started netting and taking all the salmon out of the river. Then the logging industry came in and logged the hills, and the train came in. Well, they pushed all that silt, and the water runoff from improper logging industry filled in all these 70 and 80-foot-deep holes that were on the Eel River. What those holes did was as the salmonoids, after they hatched, they have to summer over, and they have to summer over in the river. And if there's no water in the river for them to summer over, they won't make it back to the ocean. They'll all die. So this is something that's, you know, not being talked about. We are only humans. We're ignorant. We don't know what really happens unless you look at the history and see what happens. We all need to have this understanding on what has to happen for the salmonoids. Without the lake, all the river would get too warm. It'd be like the Klamath River, has a series of dams that were there. It's a very warm-water river. Fish get ikigil, it's called, and they die before they even get to lay their eggs because the water's too warm. So with that in mind, that's just something to understand a little bit about the salmonoid. Watch that movie, River's Last Chance.
Thank you.
Just a couple of follow-up points. Scott Greeson, Conservation Director, Friends of the Eel River. One, you can't join the Notice of Intent group. You can join the Planning Agreement group. This is important because the Notice of Intent that was filed with FERC is pretty much done. It's wrapped up. That exists as an entity. So the thing that you could now join is the Planning Agreement, not the NOI. Second, it's really important to note that we are not talking here about the possible habitat, the potential recovery, the possibility of salmon and steelhead being able to get back above Scott Dam. Summer steelhead are a kind of steelhead that comes up the rivers in the North Coast in late spring. They run up to the top of the rivers, to the deep cold holes where they can hold out until the fall rains come. Like spring chinook, these are a variant of, they're a larger species that is controlled by a single mutation in their genome. Scientists at UC Davis have figured this out in the last five years, that there's this one tiny place in the genome that determines whether a chinook is going to be a spring chinook, or whether a steelhead is going to be a winter or a summer steelhead. Now, the other thing about steelhead is they're the anadromous, the seagoing form of rainbow trout. Scientists from UC Davis have gone up above Lake Pilsbury Reservoir, and they've looked in the streams where you'd expect summer steelhead to have been before Scott Dam was built, and they found rainbow trout with the genes for anadromy to go to the ocean and back that also have the genetic marker for summer steelhead. Those summer steelhead are in the watershed. They're waiting to be set free. All we got to do is let them go. Thank you.
Supervisor Sabaté, did you have a question or a comment?
Yeah, I was wondering if Supervisor Crandall can give us a little greater detail on the Two Basin idea, because that's not something that we've necessarily discussed. We've discussed the joining of the group, we've discussed the review of the area, but if you can provide details of the Two Basin solution.
So the co-equal goals are improved fish passage and habitat on the Eel River sufficient to support recovery of the natural reproducing, self-sustaining, and harvestable native anodromous fish populations, including migratory access upstream and downstream at current project dam locations, and minimize or avoid adverse impacts to water supply reliability, fisheries, water quality, and recreation in the Russian River and Eel River basins. Other goals: respect tribal rights and their traditional connections to aquatic life, water, and cultural resources in both basins; minimize and mitigate adverse impacts to Lake County, including Lake Pilsbury business and residents, which is why I brought this forward. Ensure accountability governance and financially viable operations, including address potential liabilities; jointly pursue public funding based on environmental and water supply benefits; ensure that implementation of fish passage improvements in Eel River Basin happens in parallel and ideally simultaneously with water supply solutions in the Russian River Basin.
So that's exactly what I thought. The Two Basin solution is what's best for the Eel and what's best for the Russian, not necessarily what's best for us and our community. And obviously, we need a seat at the table, because having no seat at the table means that whatever happens, we have no choice. I just know that we potentially made a mistake a long time ago with Yolo County in allowing them to have control over our lake. I'm very concerned that a similar situation may be coming up.
That's not what happened, but...
Where we don't have full control.
Right, there was a lawsuit that...
Right, right. But still, we lost control, and I'm concerned that a similar situation where something in our community, in our jurisdiction, we get to lose control again over what is best for... And of course, we want to, our neighbors are important. We need to be mindful and aware of how our actions affect our neighbors, but at the same time, I, the idea of the Two Basin solution already seems to exclude Lake County. And so I don't mind signing a letter saying, we'd love to be at the table, but not to say, we sign on to this solution, because the science and the research and everything else may offer a different solution downstream. And so let's, I definitely want to be at the table. I think it's important for us to be there, but I'm not sure if our letter should say, we sign on to this idea of a solution.
Now, Neet, I have a question for you. I know originally our letter was rejected because we chose a side. Now we're being told that we have to choose a side. That's not correct, right? It's just we're going in open-minded about, you know...
Well, that's what I was going to elaborate. Go ahead.
Yes, at this point, you're supporting further discussion and the county's seat at the table. While it was acknowledged to me that the county was fine for the county to have particular interests, the county should not take a position. I'm going to leave it to you to determine exactly how that's a difference, but whatever it is, Humboldt did take their position, which was to remove the dam out of their document, and all the participants are being asked to go in with an open mind as to how best to resolve this. I'll just stop there.
Carol?
It might be helpful, just listening to this conversation, for a point of clarification. It is absolutely true, Lake County has a seat on the ad hoc committee. This action would be to support the shared objectives when joining the partnership agreement to do the feasibility study. Humboldt had to do the same thing, as Neet had pointed out. They had to redo their, update their resolution to say they supported the shared objectives. So that's what the action would be about.
Thank you. And I just wanted to make sure there was no other public comment before you closed it, I was going to...
Yeah, I think everybody's had a chance to speak.
Did you have anything else, Scott?
Yeah.
No?
Okay, good.
Okay, so I just, I just wanted to add, that's exactly what, what the purpose of this is. And I know that before, it, the letter indicated that we had taken a stance, of course. What I do appreciate in this whole opportunity for the Lake Pilsbury Alliance to come forward is that they're not allowed to go into the ad hoc committee and have a voice, and have any statements to support minimizing and mitigating adverse impacts to Lake County, including Lake Pilsbury businesses and residents. So that's the whole point of me bringing them here. And so I'm not going to silence them, and those weren't my words in saying that we don't believe in the ad hoc solution, or that the things that you had indicated, Scott, was not, was not my words. I wanted to give them simply a voice, come to the table, adjust the minute order so that we could be at the table and ensure that the studies are conducted in lieu of what the NOI intended for. So with that being said, we're going to do our best to adjust the minute order and do so. But the Lake Pilsbury Alliance has been an intricate part in helping educate me in what's going on. And of course, whether right, wrong, or indifferent, if I align with their purpose or your purpose, or however, I wanted to give them a chance to speak that out. And so I appreciate you coming forward, but it doesn't, it doesn't demean or take anything away from, from what they have said, and I just simply wanted to give them a chance to speak. And so, so that, with that being said, I just wanted to elaborate too, that we want to change the verbiage of the minute order, and there's also been a statement that other entities that are a part of it have the opportunity to have an in-kind contribution when they come forward to the planning agreement of the NOI as well. So if that's needed, we can discuss that further, but that could be our... So if that's needed, we can discuss that further, but that could be our...
Okay, so do we need consensus?
Clarputition.
Or a motion? Probably a motion.
Yeah, I'll motion to adjust the verbiage to the minute order to state that we want to come to the table and take out the, take out the statements that put us in a position that take a stance, as opposed to just making sure that we have all of the goals intact to conduct in the studies for the best-case solution for everyone at the table, because that's the whole purpose of the group intended.
We can do that via a resolution for your board's consideration next Tuesday. Would that work?
Works for me, yes.
Okay.
Is there any further action that needs to be taken, or does that cover?
Unless you have something else you'd like to do.
Okay, just making sure.
Yeah.
Sorry, there is one with regard to the participatory, then your board is authorizing the participation in the costs of the feasibility study as well.
What is the amount of that? $100,000?
Yeah, and what the minute order says is something to the effect that you'll explore funding, or how to fund that, so rather than commit to actually funding it.
Does that continue to be your position?
Yes.
Yes. Right, and with, also with, with the knowledge of, I think it's the Round Valley Tribe has been able to contribute in an in-kind fashion. I'm hoping that we, if we can't come up with the $100,000, maybe we can figure out a way with in-kind contribution to come forward with some ways to help mitigate the cost for the study as well, so.
Okay. With that, I think we're, Supervisor Sabatier?
Do we need a second?
I second it already.
Was it a motion and a second?
He made a motion, I second it.
Okay, a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I think we have covered all open session topics, so with that, we will go into closed session, but before that, I will read what a closed session is. 8.1, Conference with Legal Counsel, Significant Exposure to Litigation Pursued in Governing Code Section 549, 56.9, D2E3, California River Law. 8.2, Conference with Legal Counsel, Decision Whether to Initiate Litigation Pursued in Governing Code Section 549, 56.9, D4, One Potential Case. And 8.3, Conference with Legal Counsel, Significant Exposure to Litigation Pursued in Governing Code Section 549, 56.9, D2E1, One Potential Case. And with that, we'll go into closed session.
Take a quick break.
Yes, oh yeah, take a break, they're wrapping everything up.